Okay, counsel, it is seven o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. And would everyone please stand for the place of allegiance?
At the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, counsel, we have new mic setups here today. So bear with me as we go through this system. So we're going to go ahead and take the roll call. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present, an acquorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Vio?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Counselor Grego?
I'll second that, mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not. Okay, start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where we ask anyone who would like to make any comments to come up to the podium, turn on the mics, you'll see a red light, and speak into your mic. We will give you three minutes to make your comments. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your conversation and your comments at that particular time. We have a timer right here to keep you on track as well. I have some comment cards, and I'll call you in the order in which I have the comment cards. Okay, I have Lori Lasky. There's a budding you can push there. There you go, good.
It was a picture, that's hard. Thank you, mayor. My name is Lori Lasky. I am county commissioner here in Alamosa County. And this evening, I wanted to introduce some young people in the community that I have with me. Each of these individuals have an interest in local government. So I'm going to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves real quick.
Good evening, my name is Logan Simonis. I am a senior at Montrose High School. And, yes.
Hi, my name is Emily Cook. I'm with Boy Scouts of America. They let girls join in 2019. So yeah, I'm the SPL, which basically means I'm in charge of my whole troop. They're stressful. Um, I'm here to do a merit badge. It's a communication merit badge. Where basically, I'm listening to two points of view. So I'm going to be listening to the highway points of view and just kind of making a decision on my own. So, yeah.
Thank you for this opportunity to have them watch today what you do. And as I shared with them from Lyndon B. Johnson, government is best, which is closest to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, county commissioner Lasky. We appreciate you bringing them. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Beverly Skanga.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Skanga. I am from Salida. However, I grew up here in Alamosa. And I'm here to ask to have a plaque replaced on the building that I grew up knowing as the Memorial Building, which is now the Police Training Center. I'd like to give you a little bit of history about that building. In 1953, on March 3rd, my two older brothers drowned in the Rio Grande River. They were six and eight years old. And the money that came from their memorial service was used to build the building. And the whole town gave much to that building. Hughesong Plumbing and Heating donated all the plumbing and heating. Jones Construction Company, I'm sure, had a big part in it. In fact, when they built the swimming pool, it was in order to have a place for children to swim. And so my parents really wanted the building to be used for the youth of the community. And so for many, many years, before public school had a kindergarten, kindergarten was held there, Boys and Girls Club was held, no, Boys and Girls Club, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4H. We had a lot of 4H things going on there. So it was a well-used building. And I didn't know until last, until 2019, there had been a plaque. I knew there was a plaque near the west side door because that was originally the main entrance. Because the park didn't have a parking spot or anything back there on the east side. So the building had the plaque at the front door. And one of my, one of my brothers told me that the plaque was missing. So I came over and looked, and sure enough, it was. And I didn't do anything about it then, but it's eaten at me. And so I would like to have that plaque replaced. I have a picture, may I bring it up?
Your wish.
What I was thinking about doing was putting a bronze plaque up. But I went again today to see about where it would look good. And on the east side of the building, there is a granite plaque, which also was part of the dedication to my brothers. So on the back of one of the little pictures, my mom had written what she would like to have. So I would like to put this plaque above the granite one. But I'm thinking now that probably granite would look better. So that's what I want to do. Do you have any questions?
No, we don't have any questions, but we want to thank you for your presentation. And we do have the item listed on our consent calendar, and we'll be voting on that shortly. Thank you so very much.
And I thank you for having me here tonight, allowing me to be here. And I'd like to thank Chief Anderson because he's been very helpful in getting me here, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'll make sure you get your pictures back too. Thank you so much, okay? So Ms. Martinez, let's go ahead and go to the Zoom people to see if they have any comments before I go to my last card, okay? If you can let them, give them instructions of how to unmute themselves if they would like to make any comments at this time.
Okay, if you're on the Zoom app and you want to make a comment, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature if you're on the app by clicking that right now. If you're on the telephone, you can dial star nine and it'll raise your hand. I am not seeing anybody raising their hand, mayor.
Okay, so being that we don't have any other hands raised on Zoom, and we wanted to make sure that we are reaching out to the community members who wanted to voice any comments that they have, now I'll go back to the last card that I have in front of me, and I have Matt Abbey.
Hello, Matt Abbey, 711 Berkeley, Alamosa. Thanks, everybody, for taking time. There's been quite a bit of noise about the Main Street realignment. I think lane diet is the term that's been applied to it. And I was talking with a couple of my fellow business owners on Main Street the last couple of days. It's a pretty mixed bag. But I wanted to maybe encourage the council to support the staff and give this a little bit of time. The process that the city undertook to develop that plan was extremely thorough. It took a lot of time. You followed your procedural steps very well. You had many public meetings, and everybody had a chance to provide input that wanted to or could. It took, what, the better part of four years between then and now? This is the first step in a really well-put-together plan. My wife and I had made the decision to close our business at the end of 19, I guess it was, because it just wasn't doing as well as we wanted. And we wanted to get our family time back. And almost serendipitously, within a day or so, the copy of that plan landed on my desk. And I took it to Tammy, and we went through it together, sitting on the couch. And she said, "The city's really going to do this?" I said, "Yeah, the city's really going to do this." And she said, "Well, okay, let's go look at the Lockarts Building again." So it's a much longer story than that. There's a lot of drama, but yet that's the, that's the upshot. That's what put us back on the other side of the fence. I'm not really a very good audience for some of the complaints about the width of the lanes. I put myself through college driving eight-and-a-half-foot-wide tour buses down eight-foot lanes in downtown Seattle, along lines of parked cars at 40 miles an hour. We, we can learn to do this. Couple of friends of mine, some I get along with better than others, one said he had to wait 12 cars before he could get out of his vehicle the other day. I said, "My God, we need to do something." That's as bad as the line in Starbucks. So, point is, I think there's definitely going to be a period of having to get used to this. And something that has taken this community four years to develop deserves probably more than four days of observation before we decide to change course. I've also told my friends, many of them naysayers, that we don't always get everything right as a community, but we can count on the city, when the evidence is obviously going direction other than where we're going, to change course and correct, and to give it a little bit of time and see what happens, and let the professionals figure out a plan. That's all I have to say about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those encouraging comments. Thanks to all the participants who participated in the comment section tonight. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We have consent calendar A. Counselor Vio?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Counselor Brawls, you have any further discussion?
Yeah, I just went through the June financials, and they're, they're nice. Our, our year-to-date general sales income tax is up 14%. You wouldn't expect that coming through a COVID. And of course, you know, it's probably, there's probably some dips in there, so it's not a straight 14%. And so I just think the city is healthy, and I think it's a tribute to how, how strong our economic development is too. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for pointing it out, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to let Ms. Skanga know that this, this motion that we're doing has your brother's plaque in it. And so it was part of our consent calendar because the city staff felt so strongly about it and supportive. I just want to say thank you for sharing your story with us today, and thank you very much, and I'm really sorry for the loss for your family.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego?
Mayor, usually when we have people speak, the three minutes, we have some kind of a, somebody talks about the, each, each card and rebuttals that, I was going to ask the question, because I don't know, are we asking to put a new plaque, or are we asking to bring a plaque back? I don't understand which, what we're doing here. And I was going to ask that when you gave the comments, you know, so I didn't mean to interrupt your consent calendar A.
No, go ahead, Ms. Brooks.
Just, I was going to turn this down, it sounded like some feedback. So I think as Ms. Skanga explained there, the history of the building and what that is, and it used to have a plaque, which is then now gone. And so Ms. Skanga, as she explained, would, would like to have the plaque back. She is willing to pay for it. And so from a staff perspective, we, we feel it's a very positive, straightforward thing.
So that, that's why I was asking, we're going to go ahead and go with it then.
That, this is your, this is your item on your consent agenda. Yes, sorry. So yes, that, it's a motion to approve a plaque for the Police Training Center is on your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. No further comments. If you all don't mind, go ahead and start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, under regular business, we have presentation from outside agency, the downtown revitalization by Clark Anderson with Community Builders. He will be attending via Zoom.
And mayor, before we have Clark start, and that will give the city clerk some time to move him over, I did want to just provide a little bit of background information specific to the Main Street program, similar to Mr. Abbey's comments as well. There was quite a bit of chatter out there. I think there are some individuals who sincerely just want to know how we got to this point, what the history is. And so just in case they happen to watch this, or if you get questions while you lived this history, a little bit of a reminder is always good as well. And so I just want to take a few minutes. The first one is, I think it's really important to understand that this didn't just start with the downtown plan. It actually started way back in 2016 when we did the comprehensive plan, which identified a need to focus on our downtown for downtown revitalization. That then transitioned to us doing a downtown redevelopment plan. And, and that's then where more of the specifics of what that needed to look like came together. The downtown plan started May of 2018, and it was adopted in September of 2019. So as Mr. Abbey alluded to, it was a long process, 16-month process. The other item that I want to make clear is, the city did not start the planning process with any end destination in sight. It was entirely driven by public comment, by the downtown businesses and, and those types of aspects. The, the city, city staff, city council, didn't have any idea of what those projects needed to be and just pushed it through. It was something that truly was grown from a public comment perspective. We did lead the process with an advisory committee. It had 16 members from the community to represent ASU, TSJC, Planning Commission, City Council, Marketing Board, Chamber, and downtown businesses. In regards to how much public outreach there was, I think some people, after attending a few of them, were starting to get tired of them. But we had three community charrettes, three community open houses, multiple focus groups, and one-on-me, one, one-on-one meetings with downtown businesses. The opportunity to participate, I think a lot of times when people see something about a plan, it doesn't sound too exciting. And so they self-select to not participate, or they're busy, or they forget. But we really did want to make sure it was available and that the public was aware of it. And to that effort, we advertised on the radio, the newspaper, all our social media outlets, two times in the utility bills, a listserv, and direct mail to the downtown businesses. Not to mention the multiple times it was on the front page just from coverage by the newspaper. So there is a lot of publicity related to this. In regards to those in-person meetings, the average attendance was about 30. We offered Spanish interpretation, childcare, and food. We were, we threw everything at this to try to get people to come. We did do an online survey as well as paper, you could do either or. We had 580 people who participated in that survey. The lane narrowing project in that plan, so that plan was created, the lane narrowing project was identified as one of two to be implemented first. So that's how high of a priority this was ranked through that process. The question is, why are we doing this? And I think some people are assuming that it was so we can have outdoor dining. While that's good during COVID, and it's good to have outdoor dining because you see people outside, that wasn't the whole purpose of it. The, the, there's two goals. The first one was the, the safety of the pedestrians and the need to slow the traffic down. That was one of the top reasons for this. The other is if you have more outdoor space, so that 11 feet that we gained on each side, and if you have people sitting outside or walking outside, or more green and art and all of that, people are more likely to stop rather than drive straight through town from a visitor's perspective. It draws, and it becomes more of a destination. So it's those two aspects together, which is what prompted this project. When it comes to slowing the traffic down, we want downtown to be a destination. Previously, Main Street was designed to efficiently carry the traffic, to get them through town because it's a highway. And, and that is a great goal, but not if it's the center of your downtown, which can be the center of your community. Moving traffic efficiently does not equate to pedestrian safety or a healthy downtown. And that's part of when you start seeing the design. The design is created to have friction, to make people feel as if it is tight, to make people feel that so they want to slow down. Feeling that is not the same thing as an actual safety concern. That's where the traffic engineers come into place. So it's a very creative design to where it feels tighter. It feels like you need to pay attention because someone might try to parallel park, someone might open their car door. They may not be parked as, over as far as it's to slow the traffic down. And that's honestly what we are seeing, and that friction is working. Even before we did the downtown plan, we would hear calls more than once a month from the businesses or the residents about not feeling safe being able to cross Main Street. We've had a lot of near misses. The key here is the businesses need pedestrians to be successful. So if pedestrians don't want to be there, and if they don't feel safe, there's a direct impact on our businesses. So again, this was not just to create outdoor dining, although it's cool, and it's fun, and it does tie in a little bit. And I also want to mention, there's not just three months that we have of good weather. I think it's almost the opposite. There's three months where it's not great weather, but on the shoulder months for fall and spring, you will still see people outside. Now, the downtown plan, we had a sub for engineering. It's a traffic engineering firm. They helped come up with the plan. We then contracted with an entirely different traffic engineer to provide the plan designed, the engineering to submit to CDOT. And then CDOT's engineers reviewed the plan and approved it. The lane widths are exactly the same as before, at 11 feet. To compare that, the standard width of a tractor-taped trailer is 8.5 feet. The width of the on-street parking used to vary from 6.5 to 9.5 feet. Now it is 8.5 feet. And again, a tractor-trailer is 8.5 feet wide. So I'm just trying to give you a perspective of what we're looking at from sizes. The length of the marked parking spots is 20 feet. The average length of a full-sized pickup is about 20 feet. I will tell you, I was, I've walked it a whole bunch, I've sat there, I've watched it. We had a full-length truck with a hitch. It was pulled up perfectly, as much to the front as it could be to park. They could not have parked anymore perfectly. And the hitch did hang over the back line. But then there is a normal SUV that was still parked in the spot, not up towards the front because there's room for the hitch, but it wasn't hanging over the back spot either. The other key to the spots is no one's going to get a ticket if they're not parked within those lines of the spot going along the, the curb line. It's, it's there to help us get more efficient parking. If we can get more efficient parking, we have a net increase of parking then. But if you get two long pickups parked there, you're probably, you know, going to have to have an extra space that's not being used. So again, it's, it's okay. The other thing that seemed to be a lot of questions online is, from a liability, safety perspective, is if people aren't parking up to the curb, or if they're opening their doors. Per the model traffic code, if someone's not parked within 12 inches of the curb, and it creates an accident, they're at fault. We've had things cited through municipal court, not in this area, where they weren't parked enough to, close to the curb, created an issue, and, and there's been citations. Additionally, when you open your door, you're supposed to ensure that there's not uncoming traffic or cyclist. So technically, everyone should have been looking to make sure when we had that bike lane, they weren't opening the door with a cyclist coming. We've had individuals cited for opening their door and injuring a cyclist, or if it could have been an ongoing vehicle. So this is something that, as Mr. Abbey indicated, you know, you may have to wait for a few cars to pass, but it's okay, and you can get out. We've also heard a little bit of concerns from an ADA perspective. We do have ADA that's on the side streets, which is easier access to our ADA ramps, which are on the corners. We also are planning on adding a van-accessible ADA space next to the bike rack on State Street by Milagros. And then I want to get down to the safety. So again, the perception is it's tight because we want people to slow down. That perception does not in any way equate to an actual more dangerous situation. So slowing traffic down is very important, just one second. This is an infographic that another community used. So if, if a pedestrian's hit by someone going 20 miles per hour, nine out of the 10 pedestrians will survive. If they're hit 30 miles per hour, only five are going to survive. If they're hit going 40, only one is going to survive. Additionally, road diets include, like what we did here, it's a 19 to 47% reduction in overall crashes. And because the speed is reduced, that reduces the crash severity, as you can see in this situation from a pedestrian perspective. A pedestrian hit by a vehicle traveling 25 miles per hour has an 89% chance of survival. If they're hit by someone going 35 miles per hour, 68% chance of survival. And 45 miles per hour has a 35% chance. I've told this to you a few times, but it, or a few of you, it really has slowed traffic down. We've witnessed them letting pedestrians cross. While I was eating lunch, the semi stopped to let a pedestrian cross. And I'm not sure I've ever seen a semi going less than 25, being able to stop to allow a pedestrian up until this point. So I wanted to just provide some very specific information based on the concerns that we're hearing from the community. We understand the concerns. We understand how it feels to. We understand the concerns. We understand how it feels to drive that. That was the intent of the design. And with that, I want to turn it over to Clark.
Okay, Clark. Welcome, Clark. You're muted and thank you for joining us tonight, Clark.
Thanks, you guys. Um.
Clark, just one minute. Your sound is way, way low, so we need to figure something out.
Okay, um.
That's getting a little bit better.
That's better. I just need to talk louder.
There you go.
Is that better?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just, I just need to talk really loud. I can do that. Um, well, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because I've, I'm going to go ahead and provide a couple of slides. Um, you know, I was asked to offer some thoughts on just sort of the connection between what you guys are doing in your downtown and with your streets there, um, and, and how that relates to economic development. And so, you know, to step back really quickly, I should just share, you know, uh, my name's Clark Anderson. I'm with Community Builders. Um, we're a nonprofit organization. We're based up in Glenwood Springs. And we help communities with uh, community planning and economic development and really connecting those two issues together. And um, I want to say, you know, what you guys are, are working on and wrestling with is not an easy issue. You've kind of got the classic uh, situation. We've got a, a, a main street and a state highway moving through your downtown and you're trying to balance a lot of uh, different interests and trade-offs. And um, so going through these conversations and trying to find a good pathway forward is, is really a good thing to do. And I'm, I'm happy to be able to sort of offer a couple of thoughts this evening on, on, you know, how this relates to broader economic development uh, needs and goals. Um, and I'll say that a couple, gosh, I guess a little bit before COVID, almost two years ago now, we had the pleasure of, of hosting some folks from your community for an economic development training that we did there. And that's how I really got to get connected to Alamosa. So I've been following what you guys are doing and uh, and with interest. So um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. It might take me a couple of tries to make sure I'm showing the right thing. Okay. Switch displays. Hopefully you guys are seeing just a big slide now, right?
No, sir.
Oh, you're not seeing anything? Okay, cool. Um, let's try this. Now, are you guys seeing a bunch of, one slide?
One slide.
Perfect. Okay, cool. Um. So let's just dive right in. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, you guys have a difficult job of trying to balance a lot of moving parts within a community. Uh, communities and economies are complex. Um, they are a lot of moving parts. Sometimes we treat them like clocks that are complicated, but actually if you just follow the instructions, anybody can, can build a clock. But it's more uh, complex than that in, in towns and cities because there's a lot of inner working parts. And you know, your guys' job is to try to balance all those things and try to make investments and decisions and policies that support a healthy economy, but also a healthy community and, and try to put all those things together. You guys know that, but I think it's useful to sort of start there, um, when we think about what, you know, what this is all about. I also think it's useful from a market perspective to just consider the realities of being a, a small city in the Mountain West. You know, I, I like this picture because it helps highlight the nature of, of local economies around, around the country. And you can kind of see where a lot of the energy is, right, in the coastal metros and things like that. And within those cities, you guys know this well, but again, I think it's worth mentioning within the context of what you guys are doing, which is as much about the economy as it is about uh, the streets. Um, in, in places like this where, where we live, uh, that gravity and synergy that comes with being part of one of those lightly, uh, those sort of bright places, uh, it's not there. Um, we don't have the same economic dynamism. Our markets are, are different because of that. And so we have to think pretty strategically about how we pursue economic development when we're in this space. Um, obviously now more than ever, we're also in the middle of a pretty significant economic shift. This was true before COVID, right? When we were seeing the emergence of remote work, what people were looking for out of their communities was shifting. Um, very much the, the nature of our economies was changing and how and where people worked was changing. And related to that, there was a lot of changes around what people were looking for in their communities and their neighborhoods that were shifting uh, our markets to, particularly within the real estate market. And while we have seen uh, a pretty significant market trend of people shifting and moving away from larger metros, that isn't to say they're moving out of cities or, or downtowns or, or whatnot. It's more to say they're moving to smaller communities. And so in a way, uh, the, 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 prior to COVID, the market trend for at least fifteen years had been into downtowns and into cities. And we were starting to see some of that influence um, certain places within Colorado, including outside of the metro area. But other places weren't seeing the influence as much. But now people are looking for a lot of the same things that they could find in some of those areas, but in a different type of place, in a more rural, uh, small-town context. So it's really actually opened up a lot of doors for Colorado communities. In some ways, it's, it's actually creating a lot of pressure for certain places. They're sort of feeling overdone in terms of the amount of, of change and, and growth they're seeing. Um, but for a lot of places, it's sort of opening a window of opportunity. Um, you know, so you put these two things together along with sort of a lot of other factors that are influencing uh, local government right now. And, and this is a pretty big moment. So you guys are, all of this is happening at a pretty important time for you guys. Um, you're going to be making decisions as local officials. You guys know this better than I do. They're going to have really profound influences on the future of your community. And this is one of them, right? And so uh, thinking about where that fits and, and how we're moving forward is really important. One of the things that's important too is to sort of think about before we go about, you know, before we begin thinking about where we want to be and what we're trying to do economically from an economic development perspective, it's useful to sort of remember what, what isn't working at this point. And one of the big shifts we've seen, both economically and market-wise, is, is, you know, people want to be in cool places, authentic places, and, and this isn't it, right? This is not cutting it. Um, we're going to have places like this in all of our communities, but in a lot of places, this is so ubiquitous that it defines the communities. And these aren't the places where uh, people are moving to right now or businesses are looking to relocate in the post-COVID time. And these aren't the places where locals in existing communities are thinking, you know, I really want to think about that new investment in my business, or I want to think about rehabbing my building, uh, because there's not a lot of opportunity here. This is a, this is, this, so we know what's not working. We also know the kind of classic uh, approaches to smokestack chasing and economic development, where we're putting all of our money and resources into, you know, bringing in a, you know, a white elephant from somewhere else uh, is, is really not uh, working very well either, especially for uh, areas that, that are, as I mentioned earlier, sort of um, fit the mold of, of the more rural Western community that aren't in those more dynamic uh, metro markets. Um, what we do know works is this idea called place value. And I use that term. It's actually a research piece that we did a couple of years ago to try to understand what was driving decisions of businesses and their would-be employees in terms of where they located. Um, we were seeing some of the market and economic shifts I mentioned earlier. And we wanted to understand why some communities were benefiting more than others. What was happening there? You know, in our area, I'm up in Glenwood Springs. Why are some places choosing Carbondale, Colorado over Silt, right? They are very similar in many, many ways. So what's the difference there? And what we found uh, using survey instruments to, working with chambers and, and survey instruments to, to talk to both uh, business owners and again, their employees through two different surveys, is that, you know, both people and businesses are drawn to great places. There's of course a lot more to the study, but um, the, the really important take-home point was that the investment in local assets that makes places uh, attractive, that makes them feel good to locals, that makes them feel safe for the people that live there, that makes it feel like the type of place where you want to raise a family, where if you're a local entrepreneur, you want to invest and make that next stage in your business. These are the places that are succeeding. And we have seen that play out time and time again to the degree that the places that sort of got going on this earliest are now sort of struggling with managing some of the impacts of their success. And those stories are, you know, all over the news right now, uh, throughout the state. Because there's a lot of places that have made this shift over the last decade and uh, it's worked out. And, and now they're trying to figure out, okay, you know, how do we, how do we control the volume on this a little bit? Uh, but it's still as a, as a practical matter, from an economic development perspective, it, it's, it's really important. It really requires that we rethink how we plan our communities, how we design our communities and uh, shift from sort of making traditional decisions around planning and, and infrastructure uh, in a pretty conventional way, uh, you know, uses and zoning and, and very traditional uh, approaches to that, to making places, uh, which is in a way actually going back to a more traditional approach to the way we used to make cities uh, in the past, um, before sort of conventional policies and, and whatnot started making us build stuff that's a little different. Um, so this is a, this is an economic trend uh, that's, that's not just, you know, emergent, but has arrived. And it's working in a lot of places and you can see it all over small towns and cities in Colorado. One of the really important components of it is, you know, the role that downtowns play. Because downtowns are a place where a lot of the pieces that come together in uh, creating place value all converge, right? So the shifting market trends of people wanting to live in places that are authentic, that are walkable, that have sort of a vibrancy to them, uh, that stuff you find in downtowns. And so the investment that communities are making in downtowns is something that pays off. It's something that works and we've seen that over and over again. So in that sense, you know, these types of, of things that you guys are doing are not isolated. Uh, what you guys are trying to do is, is, is a common strategy that's become uh, less of sort of a a footnote to economic development strategies and more of a tip of the spear in terms of, of how to begin. Sort of the investment in, in downtowns and then other uh, key local assets is another piece we won't really get into tonight. Okay, so why streets? And I think uh, Heather actually really mentioned uh, pretty well some of the different dynamics here. Because there's a lot of communities that are looking at investments in their streetscapes and they're doing it for different reasons. Uh, this is a picture in Grand Junction, which is an interesting example because they're actually one of the first places in the state that made a pretty radical investment in a downtown street and converting in similar ways to which you guys are talking about, um, a very auto-oriented corridor into what has become really the center and heart of downtown Grand Junction and really is where their sort of economic heartbeat is today. But this happened a long time ago. You know, Grand Junction was way out in front on this. You know, way before Denver was doing any of these things and other parts of the state. Uh, Grand Junction decided to uh, dedicate significant amounts of, of space to sidewalks and pedestrians and really the, the local businesses that were there. And I'm sure it was a headache for them, but today what it is, is it is where the economic energy is for that community. And we actually just did a downtown strategy for them last year. And it was really sort of an economic and development plan. And the whole thing was predicated on how do we build off of the leverage of the success of this existing Main Street corridor that we've created that's become so successful for us. As Heather mentioned though, there are other considerations. And it, it's so much of this just comes down to recognizing that we need to think about streets for multiple users. You know, we need to make sure streets are places where uh, people that aren't in cars can feel safe and can get around. Um, this is a big deal. Again, not only because safety obviously matters and we really do need to think about this, but again, from a, an economic development perspective, when we create those places, we have a dramatic impact on the surrounding economic environment, right? So there is both a kind of public benefit, just public health perspective of, of making sure our streets are safe. But also it's the places where we've made these types of investments to dedicate essentially community space that businesses can leverage, uh, that we begin to see a really significant economic uh, impact. And so uh, I'll just offer a local example. Uh, we went through some of these headaches in Glenwood Springs. And uh, it's a little bit of a different situation, but I'll kind of walk you guys through some of the pieces of it. Um, it's a pretty fuzzy picture, but this is Seventh Street in Glenwood. Um, there's the Am, Amtrak station on your right there. And um, this was like maybe seven years ago, um, before we did what became known as the Seventh Street Project. And um, you know, there was a, a work by the city and the Downtown Development Authority to do a plan and think about how do we, you know, make Seventh Street a more vibrant place. And uh, lots of, just like what you guys did, lots of public input and they arrived at a pretty cool plan. And then, you know, this started happening and not surprisingly, um, people got scared. And, and it was hard and we had to grapple with things like we're going to, you know, how do we deal with the parking and um, but what I can say is on the other side of it, we have completely transformed an area. Um, I even remember a time when the restaurants that were there before were kind of nervous because they thought, you know, this might influence uh, their ability to be competitive. Or suddenly be, when they saw the success of it, they thought, well, there's going to be too many restaurants here, so we won't be able to compete. What's happened is that they all feed off of each other. And the, the energy and excitement of what's happened in the investments that the city made in Seventh Street has completely transformed this area. And it's really is the story of strategic investments. Uh, in addition to, you know, this is the area below Seventh Street here. You can kind of see the pedestrian plaza below the bridge. That's the most recent phasing of this, but it's been, all of this has been phasing in over multiple years. Um, but it's also catalyzed different investments. Uh, this is actually, this, this building that's up on the upper right is, is actually up the street. This is the new library that as the community understood what was happening on Seventh Street, it influenced uh, an adjacent street in a way where people started to say, this area is going to start to have some, some attractiveness. And um, and so the, you know, this investment happened as part of a public-private partnership between the library, Colorado Mountain College and the Chamber, um, and the Downtown Development Authority. And things start happening. Uh, from there, the city went and did an alleyway strategy and revitalized the alleys and more happened. And it has really kind of taken off. And so that's, you know, that's sort of how these things tend to go. They do hurt along the way because it, it's changed. Um, I'll give you a more local example very quickly before just wrapping up. Um, a few years ago, I was following what was happening in Buena Vista up the street from you guys. And um, I had noticed that they had made, and you can kind of see it down in the bottom left corner, they'd been starting to make some, some streetscape investments uh, over on East Main. And I was interested to see that this old building uh, had been repurposed and, and turned into a little retail space. And uh, I, I poked my head in one day and was, I was just really cool inside. And I was really interested to see how the investment had uh, come to be. And, and somebody had decided to, to try this out and they put a little outdoor dining. I can't say it was super busy, um, but it was, you know, it was great to see that they were uh, getting going. This was a few years ago. Um, I went back, actually just on my way down to the valley. I was down in Del Norte a couple of weeks ago. And um, I poked my head in again. I just wanted to see what had happened. And it is, it's, it's really, it's really taking off there. Uh, this is the same building. Since then, they've made further investments over here um, in the, in their outdoor space. Uh, inside, I would say they're doing pretty well. There's a line out the door. Um, the adjacent properties, both of them, uh, there's been investment in those areas as well. Um, and you can kind of see that over here on the, um, on the right side. And then actually across the street, start to see uh, investment as well. Uh, this is a cool little taco truck that had popped up, sort of in a little gap spot. And then this is uh, Catty Corner. Um, this is a residential mixed-use project. It's, it's popping up. Now, I'm not saying these things are going to happen overnight. This has been something that's been going on for a while. And also the Buena Vista market is different from yours. What I'm trying to say is that when you make these kind of catalytic uh, capital investments in place and you start focusing on your own community and you do it with thoughtful planning that considers, you know, how are we going to balance vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic, the space we want to provide for retailers and other downtown businesses, you know, getting all that stuff is right. Um, I wasn't part of your planning process, so I don't know how it all went. But I, I will say, you know, when you put the work in, um, it, it's, it's, you know, following along, it, it tends, you know, it tends to work. But change isn't easy and you guys might have to come back and, and see some things and, and tweak it. But what we've learned is that you need to learn your lessons first and you need to try some things. And if we had stopped on Seventh Street at the very first phase, when- And if we had stopped on Seventh Street at the very first phase, when everybody was freaking out about the initial parking questions. None of, we never would have gotten where we have in Glenwood Springs today, where that is truly the beating heart of our community. And so, uh, you know, change is not easy. Um, I'm actually here to advocate for or against necessarily this project as much as to say that communities that are making these types of investments are finding success. And so if you guys went through the process and did the work, you can be uh comfortable that from an economic development perspective, it makes sense. From a perspective of how do we create a community that works well for the people that live here? Creating streets that are safer and easier for more people to get around on is also a no brainer. It doesn't mean that it's not going to be hard for cars to get comfortable with it. But that is something that comes with time and I think if you guys give yourselves a chance as a community to try it out and if there's things just purely aren't working and really don't pan out, you can go back and fix them. Uh, but you want to give yourself a chance to find out what works. So, thank you very much. I hope that this is helpful. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, Clark. We really appreciate you joining us and sharing that helpful presentation. So council, uh, Heather, I'm gonna turn it back to you and then I'll um refer back to council who turns on their mics and um, take their comments, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to add. We are here for any questions.
Okay, so council members with the new mics. Your names pop up, but I'm not for sure which order, so I'm just gonna go over the screen, we'll test it out and then if I see that's not fair, I'll go back to visual observation, okay? But the first one at the top says Councilor Brawls, followed by Councilor Vio, followed by Councilor Daniel.
Oh, I like the project downtown. I think it helps for economic development. Uh, I guess one of my uh concerns today is, is the striping of the lanes. I was, I was driving there last night, late one evening, going, going west and uh, I'm straddling the white lines. And I thought, whoa, is this, is this correct or not? So I can see where you're getting, you can come confused a little bit because you have to straddle the white lines down the middle and a couple, for a couple of blocks there. And then so if you, if you re-stripe it, so people could clearly see that they're going, going, you know, within the lanes of the, of the highway, I think that's going to help a lot. Uh, with, you know, some possible confusion. So I, I just have that observation.
Thank you, Councilor Brawls.
Is it something where like the old marks are causing the confusion? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. Okay. Okay.
Okay. All right, so um that's not the right way to look at it, right here on this uh screen. So we'll go with uh, Councilor Vio.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I had, I've had a few of those comments as well. Mr. Boils is the, and Mr. Carson just told me now the residual lines are the old lights that are on there. Um, will those get marked over or they go away over time or?
They were supposed to be grounded off. They'll obviously fade over time, but we'll put our minds to see if there's a way that even if we sprayed black on it or something, or if there's something, I don't know, but let us kind of brainstorm on that.
Okay, and is it, is it, is that part of this project done?
Y- y- yes. I think there might be a few bollards that we need to put up. So you'll, they're more of those kind of permanent like hardy ones at the corners. There might be a few more of those we have to put up. We do plan to move the planters and, and plant stuff, but other than that, it's done.
Great, because um, where those little, I drove down there today. On Monday then to today, it was those uh traffic cones and now it's those little bars like you said, so that's good. Um, but I've, I've received a few, uh, I walked down there today and I've received some questions in that. Uh, so the bike lane is, the bike lanes are now on uh Fourth Street?
Correct, and in all honesty, we, we do have a few cyclists who were not happy with the plan. They knew it was moved in the plan. But a lot of cyclists didn't necessarily ride that area to begin with, which is part of the reason why it, it got moved as well. But yes, the bike lanes have been moved. People can still share the road if a cyclist wants to drive in the lane. That's still allowed.
Okay, and then um, a business owner today told, asked me, he's an older man, he said uh, the, the space from the new curb to the existing sidewalk, who's in charge of that as far as cleanup and then in the winter time, snow removal?
So the city does have plans, both because we can't get the um, street sweeper in there and from a snow removal. So we do have plans to do that part of it. Um, but it's also going to take some of the, the property owners to be stepping up and, and doing some of it as well. So we are going to have what we would provide from a normal street sweeping kind of perspective. Um, but that stuff doesn't pick up the trash or, or anything like that. So property owners will need to do that. We are also looking at doing potentially lease agreements with them, so they can control what's going on in those eleven feet instead of so if there's loitering going on or something like that, they can have more control over it than we can as a city.
Okay, and then, sorry, I have a bunch of questions, but then we had, I had a question also. I know we're in the, in the primed part of the year for visitors and tourists. Are we, are we allowing folks to uh, park their truck with their pop-up camper behind and then trailers and all this stuff on that, on those new parking spots?
So it's not the best thing and if I had a trailer, I wouldn't be doing that. Um, but until the motorways torn down and there's actual RV parking, really the only other place is the um, Pink Elephant site, so I don't think that's the best location. Um, but it's, it's something that if someone wanted to choose to do that. Clearly, if I owned a long truck or something like that, I'd be parking on the side streets.
Great, and then my last question, Heather, is do we have any? Are we going to do anything at the crosswalks? Just letting people know that like a crosswalk is coming, please be aware of pedestrians walking across.
And that's a great question. Um, I should have mentioned that. Um, we did receive a grant to um, further enhance pedestrian safety, safety. So at the cross-sections of Hunt and San Juan, for both Sixth Street and Main Street, we're going to have the flashing pedestrian lights. So when they push the button, they'll flash and then they can cross. Um, we'll also be evaluating how the traffic's doing after this. I know prior to this, we had a lot of people have ideas on how to slow the traffic down. With ideas of putting stuff in the middle of the street and, and things like that, which based on the reaction we've gotten to this, that would be interesting. Um, but my, my comment has always been, let's see how this works and let's see if this slows down the traffic enough to where we've, we've achieved our safety goals.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Vio. Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And thank you both Clark and Heather for your presentation. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, giving people time to get used to this learning. I want to give people a realistic, like when are we gonna kind of come back and talk? Like, does it take six months for people to get used to things like this? I think there are still people not turning correctly in the double turn lane on two eighty-five. So I just want to make sure when we say we're going to come back and look at this and make sure that it's doing the right thing, that people aren't thinking we're going to do that in two weeks and we're going to have an answer. I would really like to know when a good like when our community has enough time to have made this part of their routine.
I, I think, I think we need at least six months to a year um, to be evaluating this. I think we need to see how our community functions through its different seasons with this. Um, both from a weather um perspective, but also we have ASU students that come and go. Um, and, and this from a, from a college student perspective may be really exciting. Um, we have um, events that haven't yet happened, um, and to see how it can play into, to those events. Um, and then it's just time to, to track from a traffic perspective and, and to see how we're doing with that. Um, so I think, you know, it, it needs to be at least six months to a year, so we can see it in all the different areas.
Thank you. I, I agree with that assessment of time at least.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Griegego?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I did get a lot of comments for and against it. What are the comments that I got was now that the parking situation, can we make bigger signs telling people that there's city parking up Fourth Street or, or, you know, a block away? Where, where if somebody doesn't want to park downtown, they can say, oh, there's a big sign, there's, there's parking over here, so we'll just go around the block and park in the back.
So this feedback is really, really timely because we were finalizing our new wayfinding signage. Um, and so a lot of the signage had obviously parking for the arrows. But I don't know, um, if we were making our signs big enough at the actual parking lots. So this is very timely information. And so we can fold that into the discussion. I think we're having either next week or the week after.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other uh lights on. I don't see any names on the mic here. Um, so just like to wrap things up then. Uh, Ms. Brooks and Clark, thank you also very much for this presentation. I think it's always important, as we always try to as a council, to give the community opportunity to share their opinions and get uh feedback from them, so we can continue to progress as we move forward. Um, I would like to thank our staff who's been working diligently on this. I had an opportunity to walk um, down uh, Main Street as well and Deacon saw me out there and he pointed out to me some of the features of uh, this revitalization and the way that we're doing downtown. And I actually saw a vehicle stop to, for the pedestrian's safety. And that, that has a priority and we always have to think about that along with the economic impact and I'm glad uh, Clark was able to explain the benefits of doing what we're doing and what we keep in mind. I'd just like to end with just a, a quote so everyone to remember this is that, you know, I believe George Bernard Shaw said, "Progress is impossible without change." And sometimes we're going to have a, a little challenge, some challenges when we go through change, but as long as we keep persevering, we'll see the process along the way and the progress along the way. Uh, there you go. There you go, Counselor.
So is there any way to uh, put a tracking device as far as for traffic counts on Fourth Street at the turn, just so that we can start maybe over this, this next six months, a year? So we can study the amount of traffic that it's offset to Fourth Street from Main Street, because I think maybe, you know, that's a natural turn. So as a semi, once that semi has come through Alamosa once or twice, if he's got a, you know, a regular route through there. I'm wondering how many of these vehicles are going to start taking that natural, more natural turn off the bridge towards Fourth Street and bypassing Main Street altogether. So I'm just curious if we can maybe start tracking that or at least put that in the back of our head for, for some.
I can, I can check. I also think, I want to caution us from making too many assumptions though, because when you look at someplace like Durango, and we're not Durango, we're not trying to be Durango, but you know, I think sometimes driving there downtown takes longer and so sometimes their locals maybe use the next street over type of thing.
Well, that's, that wasn't an assumption. I've had people call me and tell me that the traffic, the semi traffic on Fourth has increased. That's one of the, a couple of the calls I got, so I was just curious.
I know. Well, and so it'll be hard to measure from an increased perspective if we didn't have prior measurements from a, from a semi. So I, so I just want to make sure we, we don't jump to too many assumptions. We can, we can see, I'll look into seeing if we can get some put out there to get traffic counts. I don't know if it differentiates between a regular vehicle versus a semi and some stuff like that, but I also just want to say it may be A-OK if some of our locals like myself are now using Fourth Street instead of Main Street and just park on the side street to then walk around downtown and that leaves more room for the tourists and, and that down Main Street. So the problem is we may not have the prior stuff, but I can check where we've had that, that out for a measurement and if it differentiates between regular and, and the heavy trucks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Okay, so uh, once again, thanks, uh, Ms. Brooks and, and thank you, uh, Clark. And uh, we'll go ahead and move on down the agenda to the next item. The next item, we have a presentation from outside agency, the lead update. We have our lead team here and audience. Feel free to come up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody. Um, so today I wanted to change it up a little bit because I know we've been here quarterly for the last about three years now, hard to believe three years, but um, so I know one, during one of my policy meetings, I know I present a lot of data, information, numbers. But it's hard to put in perspective what our actual case managers do with those numbers and the people that we're working with. So I wanted our case managers one, so you could see who some of them are. I know you guys have met some of them already, but putting it face to the people who are doing the work is really important, I think, because they're in the, on the ground and the community, working one-on-one with our participants. So I'm going to have her share a story about what her day looks like as for a case manager. Um, but it, just a couple of quick things I wanted to give you guys some updates on. Um, so the National Support Bureau, who are our technical assistance providers uh, for the lead are making a visit to the valley here in September, so I'm really excited about that. Um, we have a couple of the trainers from the National Support Bureau who are going to be here in the valley. Uh, one of them is retired Brendan Chief Cox. He's actually been here a couple of times to provide some training for our law enforcement officers, so he's coming back, but he's bringing an additional partner with him, which is really exciting. Um, just to have our national supports be here, recognize what we're doing in the valley and to meet our team. Um, so they'll be here the week of September eighth, so we may ask some partners to pop in, say hello and um, meet them. And then the week of the September twentieth, we have an evaluation site visit from our evaluation team. So we're currently in our last year of our evaluations, so they're trying to get to all of our sites and get some you know, interviews done and meet with our partners and our participants again. They were here a couple of years ago, but um, they, when COVID hit and we all went to lockdown, we didn't get to site visit, so they're going to be here again um, that week. And then I just wanted to also mention, um, with our partnership with the city, we've been able to address a need that we've seen over time doing this work. And so one of them was being able to receive referrals from our community partners. And so we did write for a federal grant, um, and we did receive it and now we're trying to work on rolling that out with our community partners. So you really want to be really um, specific when I say that because it's our community partners we're receiving referrals from um, for this pathway. So it's an additional pathway to get to the type of case management supports that our team does, um, and working with our partners. They've all been very supportive and excited about this, so I'm excited about rolling it out and working with our partners. Um, on another note, we have had the DA liaison position in the DA's office, which has also been very helpful. And you guys have all met Scott Dillon. Unfortunately, he's sadly leaving us for law school. Um, he's leaving on Saturday, so he couldn't be here to say goodbye, but we have found a replacement and so we hired Jared Valdez. Did I see that? It's Valdez, right? Um, to join our team. So he's been able to work with Scott over the last couple of weeks, shadow him, get to see what he's been doing in the DA's office. I don't know if you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it, you know, basically, um, kind of like a bridge, um, for CRP. You know, I work with them just to kind of give them court dates for some of their, their participants, restitution fees. Just so they kind of know what's going on with that process and um, we're trying to make it bigger, you know, trying to see what we can do more to, to really bring um, lead to the DA's office a little bit, a little bit more and um, you know, I've only been there for three weeks, so I'm still learning a lot and um, continuing to learn. But yeah, hopefully I can, you know, really bring new ideas and new perspective and um, really be able to help the community for sure, so.
Um, and then I'd also like to extend and invite the city council members to come do a ride along with our case managers. Um, so if you guys are interested in doing that, um, just please feel free to reach out to me and I can give you guys my contact information or Heather also has it. Um, it's just to be able to spend a day with our case managers to kind of follow around, see what they do and how they are out in the community after you hear the story of uh, what Gil has to say. Um, so I would like to introduce the team really fast. So this is our team lead, um, Gil Garcia. And then we have Mario Lanettes, who I'm sure most of you know from our fire department as well, but he's joined our team in April. And she, I don't think, you want to say anything before I do?
I don't have any updates, you know, with, obviously to work with this team and get my guys involved. With Guter as well, um, kind of work policies and any new procedures, so things seem to be going pretty well.
So I guess it's me. So when she says inviting you guys to go on a ride along, that means you guys will go with me sometime anyway. And I'm really fun, anyway. Um, so when Carrie asked me to do this, I did this the last time and I really thought about what I don't want, what did I, what I wanted to catch and so whenever I did it the last time, I thought, man, I really like, was kind of bragging about myself, but it's not bragging is what it is, is I really want you guys to know the things that we do and we call it the guerrilla case management and it goes into walking with them into places, making the connections right with them, rather than just telling them what to do makes a big difference. So I went through one of my days, so just So I went through one of my days. So just one morning, I will start off with just emails and calls that I've already received. My phone starts probably going off at 7:30 in the morning. Sometimes I get 3:00 in the morning and boundaries have to be set, obviously, with our, with our people. So I'll start checking those. And then, of course, if any of my participants need court dates to be reminded that day, we put them in our calendars and it's really good that Jared's here. Because that's one of the things that Scott gave that we really appreciated is that he did all of our court people. We took all of our participants and gave us the court dates on what dates. And so we're able to remind them as well. Obviously, whenever we were doing transportation, we were able to pick them up, take them to court. And now we're starting to do that slowly with masks and the COVID precautions. So I'll start doing that, look at my emails and then, of course, I'll call Carrie. There's probably a few phone calls to Carrie because she's my person that I can really talk to and just kind of staff with, making sure that I'm doing all the right things as far as making the right decisions. And so there's probably a few phone calls that I make through there. We do get a warm handoff. Carrie will send it right over to me. And then I will make outreach to those participants who they refer. I will make a warm handoff. Warm handoff concludes of, we will do a release of information. We do all the appropriate paperwork. And I really just sit down with them to talk to them to see what their needs are. Some of them are very immediate. And so that means that they need clothing. So I'll walk with them over to Rainbow's End to get some clothing for them. We had a gentleman come in who did not even have a shirt. And it's really hot outside. So we were able just to go down there and get some stuff for him. Re-threads works with us very well and so does Bosie's. Amy Raya is amazing. She has the, what they call the closet. And we go over there, we make a schedule and it's all free. It's all completely free. So if you guys ever need to donate, please donate there. Then I get an email or a text saying, hey, I have court right now. Can you really walk in with me? I really want you to talk to my probation officer. So I will go over to the, after I finish up with all of those things and the warm handoff, I head over to the courthouse. And so I meet my participant there just to meet. Sometimes they're in jail, sometimes they're not. And just letting them know that I'm there and supporting them also with their probation officer. That gives me a chance to update them, talk to them, kind of see what's going on and where they're at in their process. Then I shoot over to an engagement, which engagement date, all of you guys, I don't know, Mr. Chief knows. That we, every Wednesday, we head over to the Alamosa Police Department and our other departments in the county. And we do engagement. So we give them a nice drink and a snack and they really like us because we give them ripples. And so we get to staff with them and we get to talk to them about participants that are already, you know, hey, have you seen this person? Or hey, yes, why, seen over on Eighth Street and she didn't look very good. And so it just really gets us going with our, really communication well with our police officers. And then after that, I had a participant who was not having a very good day as far as mental health goes. And so obviously I am not a clinician. And so we work really well with different therapists such as Mrs. Christina, which we do love her as every hat she carries, which is a bunch. So I called over to Esperanza House, which is through San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group. And I talked to Rick Escavell, which a lot of people know. And I said, hey, I've got this situation going on with this client, not voicing suicide or homicidal, but just need some clarification and just needs somebody to listen with that kind of scope. And so he's like, bring him over, head over to, I took my participant over to Esperanza House because I don't think she would have gone in there alone. And so just making that handoff, being there with her, they explained to her what was going on. And of course, they took her back so that she could get her mental health needs met. And so I waited there for her and then I was making sure that they had checked all their checkboxes to make sure that she's not a danger to herself or anybody else. And then I will call Carrie and staff that situation because obviously that, that kind of situation needs to be documented very well. And yeah, so that's my day. And she listens to all of my stuff. So I really appreciate her. And so, yeah, that's my day. Does anybody have any questions or?
Sure, we'll, we'll go ahead and take questions. And so counselor, go ahead and light up your mics. I figured this out now. So we're going to go in this order. First up, we have Counselor Vehill, followed by Counselor Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just, Gail, thank you for all you do and your whole team and what you guys are doing. I'm just, I'm just thrilled of how much it's grown, how much outreach you keep doing. I say it every three months when you come over here. Mario and all the chief, everybody, how everybody has just bought into this program and how it's working. And it's, it's, if it's affecting a few people here and there, then it's good enough for me. And I'll always back this program. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Hensley, then followed by Counselor Daniel.
So I also want to thank you all for everything you do. Echoing everything that Counselor Vehill says is that it's just great. I am actually really excited to do a ride along. And so I'm going to set that up. I, I am always one of those, I really like to experience all different things. So I actually am going to take you up on that and I'll make a phone call and set that up. I think it'd be good to, I, I mean, obviously hearing your day, you're running around, you're doing lots of stuff. And so, but making such a difference in people's lives. So thank you to all of you for all that you do.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you.
Followed by Counselor Grego.
Thanks, Mayor. So I do have to attest, Gil is really fun. So if you do the ride along, it will be, it will be great. The other thing that she didn't talk about, she like mentioned documentation in passing. But I have to tell you, the information and resources and reports that we get back from Mario, from Gil, from the entire team about what is happening in our participants' lives, the participants that we share. And if they're worried about them, that comes often. It is not something that is just like, oh, I get to do my documentation, right? Like, no, Gil made it sound kind of simple. But truthfully, keeping everyone who's involved in these participants' lives abreast of what is happening is a true skill. And the lead team and all of their case managers do that very well. I got two reports today on two different participants that we share and with amazing, amazing updates. And so the other thing, like, and I know, Gil, you're in, in this eight hours, but she didn't talk about like what it's like to sit with someone who's crying. She worked with me with a participant who was in a domestic violence situation. She came to my office three times. She went with us over to Tucasa. She made sure that person got into Tucasa. When she was struggling, she helped her move out of the shelter. The, these case managers are people our community members can call when they have no one else to call. And we have been in a situation in our community for too long when there was no one to call. And so knowing that they're there and knowing that the way they care and the way they help people find self-sufficiency, like Gil's story doesn't even talk about the skills she's building with these participants, the things that they're, they're learning and going and the things that they're going to be able to do on their own because of the time she's spent with them. And so I just want to let our team know when, when Counselors Vehill and Hensley and everyone was like, hey, I think this sounds like a good idea. We're making a huge difference in people's lives because we were able to bring this. And the team that they have at CRP makes that difference every day. And our officers making those decisions to make those referrals makes that difference every day. And I'm just so proud to be a part of that.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Every time Chris talks, she talks from the heart. She does. I really appreciate that. I just want to thank you guys for making this program successful and for explaining your day with, you know, how you go through the whole, through the whole process. One comment, one question I had is, I guess, in order to get in this program, does the person have to come and ask to get into program or how does that work? Because the point I'm trying to make is we got a gentleman that walks around our community in just a blanket. Sometimes he has shoes, sometimes he doesn't. And is, if there was a program, something like this, you talked about taking him over and buying clothes or, or even talking to it. Because I've, I've sat there and tried to talk to this guy and he's, you know, I know they have rights, everybody has rights, you know? But I think with the help in hand, maybe we could communicate with him. And, and I've seen him everywhere. I've seen him walking towards Vana Vista, you know? And, you know, I, if you feel bad, you know, why can't we help this person? And I know everybody has rights and can walk and do whatever they want as long as they don't break the law. So is there some way that we can talk to somebody like that or, or even point and torch mental health or something?
I, I, I think I know who you're referring to. And he frequents our building often. And our case managers will go out and give him a bottle of water and, you know, just say hello and, you know, talk with him. But again, you know, working with this program and being able to receive referrals from our officers is one thing. But our community partners or others who have interactions and why we decided to expand it to receive referrals from our community partners for that reason. So, you know, working with our community partners has been a big opportunity for us to expand how we receive our referrals for different populations. So it doesn't necessarily always have to just be in contact with law enforcement. We're all trying.
Okay, any other council members before I wrap things up? Comments? Okay, so I too would like to thank you all for the work that you're doing in the community. Thank you for the collaboration with the police department as well. And you're making a big difference in the lives of so many different people. And also I just want to thank you all for showing up yesterday at the City Services Fair and National Night Out. Your presence was greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Ty, I want to go ahead and tell you about that. I called Carrie after that and I said, you know, we were a pretty awesome mayor. I said, you know, he stopped, recognized us, he talked to us, knew us by our first name. He took a picture with us, sat there and just, we really, really appreciate that, that to take time and just to, you really know us. And so when we do talk to you, we know you listen. So we appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. And I will be going on a ride along as well too. So I'll make sure I pick you.
I'm a great driver. Don't let anybody tell you different.
All right, thank you. Take care, everybody. All righty, job. Okay, counsel, that brings us down to the next item on the agenda. Business brought forward by our city staff, the first reading of ordinance number 12 dash 2021.
I'm just looking to see if Rachel's going to approach the podium.
Okay.
She's on her way.
There's a traffic jam.
So this is ordinance number 12 dash 2021, and it is just housekeeping. So really, there are no substantial changes that we're making that have to do with serious content in the code other than us making a change to be in compliance with the House bill that passed regarding childcare centers. We don't have a choice in changing our compliance with that. So House Bill 211222 requires that we treat childcare facilities as any other home in a neighborhood. And so we had distance separations of 250 feet between our facilities and we had to remove that. So of all the changes that are proposed before you, that's the only one that really could make a difference in our community. And everything else is typos or just inconsistencies in our code that needed to be cleaned up.
Okay, Counselor Carson.
Have you had anyone, I mean, I don't know how, how much this has been put out there. So do you know of any businesses that this will directly affect? Have they approached you? Has anyone had concerns? I mean, I know, you know, that we have no choice but to move forward. But I'm just curious because I know we have several home-based daycares in town. So I'm just curious if anybody's come forward or if you know of any specific instances where this is going to affect.
The, the only instance, and we haven't had any instances, but the only issue might be parking. And we do have a little bit of, of ability to deal with some of the parking issues. So they didn't take that away. It's just a matter of not being able to control where they're sited. But we don't have any, any questions about it.
And I just want to make sure we're clear because I think the thought might be that the state is making it harder. But really, the state is making it to where we, we can't have our distance requirement. So we had to take the distance requirement out. So as far as businesses that are doing child, this makes it easier for them. And so then, but then if it does create other issues, Rachel, just address that from a parking perspective.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Counselor Grego.
I didn't have any questions. If nobody else has any questions, then I'll go ahead. That we make a motion to approve this on first reading, ordinance number 12 dash 2021 and set it for a public hearing on what the, what date is that? Eighteenth? Eighteenth.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay, start voting, please. I think we're missing one.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda under public works. First reading of ordinance number 13 dash 2021.
That one's me. So this ordinance is just for us to perform our regular election under Title I. And we need to establish an IGA with the county in order to do that. So we've done this since like 1993 when coordinated elections were able to happen. And the IGA is included in there and it specifies the responsibilities of each party conducting the election.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. We've done this many times. So I'm going to move that we approve ordinance number 13 dash 2021 and set it for a public hearing on August 18th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Start voting, please. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us on down to committee reports. If you have any committee reports, please turn on your mic so I can recognize you. Okay. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm getting this update from Andy Rice. I missed the library board meeting last week. My fault. Actually, I didn't call my, my backup, so let's just forgot. Sorry. So Andy gave me the highlights from the meeting that we have two new members. We had the first full board in a long time, which is a good thing. And they met in person back here in the patio. So that was awesome. And Summer, Krebs, Don Krebs, has been voted as the new chair. And the summer reading program had 180 in one day, which is like smashing all-time records. So they're just rolling right along. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. That's good information there. Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Daniel.
I too, I'm sorry I wasn't able to go to the homeless, you're going to give a report? I was going to ask if somebody would give a report. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did attend the homeless meeting. We are now meeting in person and it has been wonderful to get together. So we made a lot of progress, like a lot of progress at our last meeting, really going through our gaps and our services matrix, matrices, the matrix itself, and then all of the pieces of it. But it was really a great opportunity for people to dissect where there could be gaps in the services. We still have several pieces to go through, but I think that that will be a fantastic resource for our community when we get it done. And so lots of good progress. We are going to continue that same work next time. And so if you do know people who serve homeless individuals, help prevent homelessness that you think might not, that they're out of the, the normal realm, I mean, we have lots listed. Please do let me know, counsel, and I will make sure that they are on our list. And if they're not on our list, I will add them and maybe ask you for some more information. But I think we have a really solid list right now. But just in case there's something we might be missing, we don't want to miss anything. But it's a great group and they're doing really, really good, hard work. The next meeting I attended, I also attended the Housing Authority this past week. And they're, you know, rocking and rolling, doing, doing the things, they're making improvements to their sites, doing some really neat things, really looking at their bylaws and structure and making sure everything is where, where it should be. And the new members that have been added and with the participation of Rachel as well, I believe that we are going to have a really strong housing authority in our community. Not that it hasn't been strong before, but I think it's getting stronger as we go. And that's been really nice to see. Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I had a question on that, about Housing Authority. Is there any chance that we could meet with them, just being at their board? And I've been here for eight years and I've never met with them before.
So somebody, I think somebody needs to, there you go.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just trying to think through, we, I think probably, you know, maybe a work session and we can extend an invitation and maybe treat it a little bit like our, our joint city-county meetings where we have each group brainstorm if there's any topics type of thing. Where we have each group brainstorm if there's any topics type of thing. Is that what you envision?
And Heather, I do also know that they were hoping for that with the pilot money, the discussion that they wanted to have. If we could, I know that that's not part of the thing and they have things to, to work through to present back to you. But I do know that they would like to have an audience with us for different things.
Yeah, it just would be good if you had staff review that in advance, but yes.
Okay, councillor, okay, good. Councillor Grego.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the homeless program. I appreciate the way the city manager runs that. Do it within a certain period of time, and now she's providing information prior to the meeting. So it kind of makes that meeting go through instead of taking two, three hours. They, it goes right to the T N F. You know, when you go to a lot of meetings and you allow that, all this extra talking and stuff, like some of our council meetings. It's good that you run it that way, Heather. I really appreciate that.
Okay, councillor Grego. Thank you for that. Okay, so we're gonna move on down. I don't see any other mics lit up, so we'll go to the next item, staff announcements.
So as the chief makes his way up, I'll do just a quick upcoming events that are coming before your next regular meeting. We do have Beat the Heat BBQ, which is this weekend at Cole Park. We have the Board Appreciation Dinner that is on August ninth at six P M at the brewery. Is there anything else you wanted to say to that, Holly?
I just need your R S V Ps in, like, by tonight. So if you haven't, let me know your dinner choices and that you're coming. I need that.
You also have a special meeting next week. And so that's the first meeting from the evaluation perspective. And then we also then have the council retreat coming up. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's good to see everybody. It's just a, kind of an update to everything we've been working on. Without your support, without my boss's support on my crazy ideas. We really wouldn't see a whole lot of change. But just to give you guys an update on what we've been working on since. The appointment of a new detective, which is our narcotics investigator detective. The number's gonna sound a little crazy, but I want to explain that before I give you the numbers. So obviously, we're going after drugs, right? I think everybody by now knows that. I think we've developed a really, really effective plan. There's alternative options to this as well, and I'm not used to this new mic. But with these new ideas, I don't put a press release out. I'm not asking my boss to put a press release out for every one of these. You've really only seen the ones that I think have a bigger effect. So after his field training program and we get him on the street, the detective. We have had a total of twenty-two. Operations that we have put together as a department since March. So it took a while to get him off the training program. Even though he's an experienced officer, we still put him in a different division. It's a different assignment, which takes more training. So twenty-two operations so far, and we're gonna continue. We're gonna keep going. I've received numerous comments from our citizens. That's my job is to, to make sure that they're safe and to address the problems. And I'm gonna continue to do so. You know, everybody's gonna get a little backlash on this, but sometimes I'm gonna, I'm just gonna tell you the truth and how it is. So it's having a positive impact. We're gonna continue to do it. You know, I hope you like what you, what you see so far because there's more coming.
And I just do want to, once again, as the chief started, is, is to thank council for your support. You actually allowed the additional F T E under Chief Oaks. It was Chief Anderson who said we need to dedicate this from a detective perspective. But councils also stepped up mid-year and allowed a budget adjustment to allow for additional overtime. That it takes for these narcotic operations. And then also funds for the equipment that we needed to purchase as well. So I just want to thank council and make sure that, that, you know, we say thank you for that support and for allowing this to happen. And for Chief Anderson dedicating that position.
It's always good to have a boss that can cover all my areas that I didn't cover, right? She does a good job at that. So also, I'd like to, to advise you guys that I am working with other departments. I can't forget to mention them. I'm talking federal agencies as well, our local and federal agencies. So I'm also working with the homeless county sheriff's office. I'm working with Adams State University. So we're doing everything we can. That's all I can tell you, okay? We're gonna keep it up, though.
Thank you, Chief. We have a few comments, if you don't mind. Councillor Hensley, followed by councillor Brawls.
So I want to thank you for everything you're doing, and I know it's definitely making a difference and there's a lot of positive feedback to it. And I actually, I'm not sure who was responsible for the last media write-up with the idea that it's happened three times in that house. I think that was a really, I was really glad to see that. And I guess I'll say it out there. I, it would be nice to see the D A's office help support this as well. So I'll put that out there that we need to work as a team. And that idea there that it would be nice to get that support from other agencies as well.
Thank you. Very well said, councillor Hensley. Councillor Brawls.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Appreciate, appreciate that. And no, I, I'm concerned that the drugs are gonna get worse. I was concerned about that four years ago and I'm concerned about today. It's gonna get. I don't know, exponentially worse. And so I, I'm glad we're on top of it. We need to, we need to stop it in its tracks and not letting it go on. And really, I'm one to consider if you actually need another detective or a little bit more manpower. Please, please tell us because I, I'd like to, I'd like for us to be on top of these things and not have to come. From bottom up, I'd like to stay on top and then keep it, to keep it bottled in. So again, our community thrives when people know it's safe. Economic development thrives when people are safe. And so I greatly appreciate what you're doing and, and you know, basically, that's, that's my attitude.
Thank you, councillor Brawls. We have councillor V Hill, followed by councillor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hensley, I'm glad you, you said what you said. And if, if I could just offer a little bit of history to that press release. That, that third hit on that house is two blocks away from where I live. So folks in that area have, have gotten a hold of me during the first two. Then after this third one, then a lady who lives in that area was freaked out and jumped my ass hard. You know, why aren't you doing anything about this? And I, I tried to calm her down. We, I'm trying. Every time this happens, I talk to city manager or I, and she'll talk to the chief. So that day, she, she got on me. I went and saw Heather. I got chief's number as well as Heather's card. Heather and Heather said, tell her to call me. I went right back to her house. I calmed her down a little bit. And I told her what you just said, that we're doing everything we can. We've, we, there's, there's been almost a bust a week the last four or five months. The D A is doing his job. And then, and the, the press release that came out, chief, it was awesome. And that's what needs to happen. Because there, we've, we've listened to our constituents, we're hitting it with lead, and we're getting after the dealers. So then more stuff needs to happen on this side. And the D A needs to do his job.
Thank you, councillor V Hill. Councillor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for what you're doing. I've gotten a lot of good comments that we're, and I told them, we're coming. They're gonna come. You know, and what I, what I do tell these people, don't be scared. Call the cops. We need to know, we need to, they need to know where the action's at. And it probably won't happen overnight that they, but they're gonna put a watch on it. And with time, you're gonna see some action, you know? It's not, you know, just because you call the cops and I wanna break somebody's door down, what? They're gonna, they are gonna find an address. They're gonna look at it. And with time, you're gonna see some action, but a lot of positive, positive. But finally, I says, well, I said, we got a strong, young chief here that he, when he says something, he's gonna do it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Grego. Councillor Carson.
Chief, thank you. You guys are doing a great, great job. You know, we talked earlier in the evening about, during the presentation, you know, a community that people want to be safe in, feel safe in. We're doing all this revitalization downtown, talking about the future of our alleyways, all these different things we're gonna do. And then, you know, that extends outward, not just to downtown, but all our neighborhoods. And so this feeling that all this action has brought is a feeling of. As far as what I've heard, what I, what I've felt on the street is, it's a comfort level. And it does give people the ability to, to be able to feel more comfortable notifying the law when they see something that's happening. It doesn't make them feel, you know, as scared as they were before. It makes them feel like there's more people involved. The city's actually behind them as a citizen, wanting to do something about, about the things going on in their neighborhood. So, you know, thank you greatly because you guys are really making a, this really good effort. This is, I mean, a really good impact on, on the comfort of the citizens of town. And so, you know, I can't say it enough. Thank you for what you guys have done. It's been great.
Okay. I don't see any other lights lit, so I'll wrap things up. Chief and Heather and the entire team, thank you all so very much. Chief, I don't know if I'm glad or sad about the twenty-two operations, but I'm, I, I must say that. It's a good feeling seeing that our, our police department is doing what they have to do. To get a grip on the crime that's going on in, in our community. It's unfortunate that when you do all of this hard work and you perform these operations. And you arrest these people who are violating. The laws that they're being freed without any consequences. So I think as council and as the city, we just have to continue to voice our concerns. To make sure that people are held accountable for their actions. And I also would like to continue to encourage our residents to make those phone calls to the police department. And let us know what's going on because we don't know everything that's going on. And it takes a team effort for us to make sure that we rein in the criminal activity out there. We don't want to discourage people from making those phone calls, but I encourage your officers to continue to do everything that they need to do. And I can assure you, everyone on this council is all about making sure that you and your team, including our city manager and our attorney. Making sure that you all have the resources you need to be effective in this process, including Ms. Martinez as well. I want to make sure I'm including everybody in this, but thank you so very much. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, that'll bring us anymore? No? Okay, so it brings us down to the next item. We have local liquor licensing authority action. This is a consent item. So councillor V Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay, start voting, please. Missing one. Okay. Double tap one more time, see? Didn't show up. Not there? Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take it. All right. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, good. We're almost down to the end, y'all. His council comments. I'll recognize you as I see you pop up on the screen. Okay, I'll start off with councillor V Hill, followed by councillor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, I don't know if you're still taking items for our retreat. But maybe something, I've been getting this a lot lately from folks is some of these houses are going up for sale. And people are buying them up and turning them into Airbnbs and that. So some people are. Are worried that they're gonna lose that sense of community, living in a neighborhood and that. So if, if we can explore that and see if there's any kind of limits we can put to that, I don't know. Thank you.
So given how quickly it's coming up, I'm not sure if the retreat's the best one. I can touch base with staff. I will tell you, it was getting back on our radar. Back when we did the U D C, we looked to see how many do we even have in our community. At that point in time, there wasn't very many. So our regulations are fairly minimal. There's some, but they're fairly minimal. Over the last few years, I think that's grown. And we have also heard a lot more from the neighborhoods and, and the neighbors of these areas. Because I think sometimes when we do an Airbnb, we're going to a community. It's, we're behaving like any family member would in that, that house. Some of these Airbnbs are being rented out for a party or a graduation party and some stuff like this. So I think that's evolved, the, the number and how they're being used since we did our U D C. So it was something that we were gonna start talking about. So I'm not sure if we're ready for it for retreat, but it would definitely be a good work session. But let me touch base with staff, but I wanted to let you know it was on our radar as well.
Okay, thank you, councillor V Hill. Councillor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I had the same exact comment as councillor V Hill. I think we probably talked to the same people, so thank you for checking that out. Um, I also wanted to say, I think there still could be some softball games, but I think the softball season for the Parks and Rec is over, almost over. We had, I know we had the women's tournament last night, Andy saying there's a little bit left. It was a great season. I have to say, the Umps were fantastic this year. There was a lot that happened. Lots of really good feedback and, and a lot of good help, and I think Don did a great, a great job. I also want to say thanks to everyone who was there yesterday for the city services fair. It was windy and people were still smiling and trying to give people hamburgers and hot dogs and not complaining about that. So thank you for, for being out there. I know we hit some bumps with our technology, but thank you, I T team, because holy moly, this system is awesome. I think our streets project is going well. I know there's been bumps, but I think I really appreciate all the work. And again, just the attitudes of our team, as we've been seeing this happen and as there's been feedback. I honestly believe that our city staff responds very well and very appropriately when concerns come up and also tries to provide facts. And so I really appreciate how the entire team works together to do that. And then really, I'm kind of really proud of our police department. I didn't comment when the chief was speaking. But I am very, very excited about being able to say, we've done twenty-two ops in five months. I mean, that's, that's over four a month, right, chief? So that, don't, that's, that's a lot. And, and the way that the team is working together and also the information and the communication I'm hearing from people. Who are recognizing that there's something happening and are recognizing the changes has just been really, really nice. And being able to know that we can count on our police team to be able to do the things that need to be done. And so just really, really wanted to say thank you. You all have been doing amazing work this summer. Our summer is busy, busy, busy. And I don't, I don't think I've seen anyone complaining. I'm sure there's complaining because that's what we all do, but I have not heard it. So, you know, I think things are going really well and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Daniel. Okay. I don't see any other lights or names showing up on the podium, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. I would like to thank all the staff and everyone who was involved in the city appreciation, employee appreciation event. I know some of the council members, councillor Hensley, councillor Brawls and councillor Daniel, you were present. I appreciate you being there. Jasmine did a wonderful job and her and her team and the barbecue committee, making sure that we had plenty of food. The golf course was a wonderful place to have that event. And I also want the golf course to know that I, I talked with some people who came into town who are visitors. And they had some good comments to say about playing the golf course this week, so that was very good to hear as well. Thank you to everyone who participated in the city services fair, in the neighborhood, night out. Watch, seems like we had a lot of community stakeholders and partners who came out yesterday. And what I was really most impressed with, with them was the amount of young people who showed up, who showed an interest in those different career fields. So that, I'm very happy about that. Brendan and I T team, thank you for these new mics. Took me a while to get used to it, but I like this new scrolling feature now. It's pretty cool. So actually, I'm impressed. Good job, good job. And then the public works department. I know you all have had a lot of phone calls and a lot of you probably read those social media posts and things like that. I just want to encourage you all to keep your heads up and just know that every now and then, people are gonna have something to say. I just want to encourage you all to keep your heads up and just know that every now and then, people gonna have something to say. But it doesn't mean that you have to respond to everything they say. Just keep your head up and take the high road as we continue to make progress through our city. That's all I have to say. Thank you all very much, and this meeting is adjourned.